Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the board's order. I'd like everyone to please rise and join us in the United States of America and into the Republic of the United States. One nation, America, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Here. President.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
It's a move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's a move, second.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
Comet?
Yes. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue? And we'll move on then to communications, correspondence, information, all those. Letters and newsletters? Some of this stuff telling us that there's future administrative shortages? As if we didn't already know? Oil requests? There were not again. Doing something right, I guess. Suspension report. Unfortunately, there was a suspension.
Longer than you'd like.
Yes. Committee reports? Crickets, so here are crickets. Recognition of principals.
I'll jump in here. October is National Principal Appreciation Month, and last week was National Principal Appreciation Week. So.
Friday was National Principal Day.
Day. So October's a big month for our administrators, our principals in specific, and we were with the Communications Department. There were a couple of interviews you might have seen out on social media. I remember seeing Mr. Carlson and Mr. Countryman, just to name a couple. So we had to recognize them publicly on social media. And then today, Nick and Nicole and I did a kind of whirlwind building tour and stopped by and saw all the principals. We didn't see all of them, a couple of them were tied up in the community, which is fine. Just gave them a small token of appreciation. There was a resolution in the board packet that comes out every year from the Illinois Principals Association. But when it comes down to it, I think being a building principal, building administrator is one of the toughest jobs in the school district. Kind of caught in between district administration sometimes and working with their staff and trying to give them what they need. Trying to support them as best they can, and unfortunately, sometimes we have to tell them no when they make requests and advocate for them. So sometimes can be kind of caught in the middle. But at the end of the day, they're the ones in the school working with their staff, working with their students, working with their families. We appreciate what they do, but oftentimes goes unnoticed. Like most of our staff, many of our staff, they're working hours beyond the end of the school day and weekends and other times. So at this time, we'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize all of the principals. Not all of them are with us tonight, got a couple of them with us. But just want to recognize all of our building administrators, all for all the work that they do, and say a hearty thank you.
For those principals that are here, want to stand up and get a round of applause? On behalf of the board, thank you very much for your service. And I really do appreciate it, appreciate that service, especially in these times as we alluded to earlier, where we know that there's such a shortage of administrators and teachers and personnel to go around for districts. It's really good to know that we have such a strong team and we're able to field such valuable and worthy principals to administer at our schools. So we really do appreciate you. We probably don't ever say that enough, but at least tonight we can try to make up for that. Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent for Business Services report.
Thanks, Jim. So tonight I have a couple of different items underneath my presentation. First one is going to be Mark with 11 Million Acres. So at the last board meeting, I was able to give the board a little preview on the Community Solar Initiative. And so Mark is a partner with 11 Million Acres, and so we have asked him to join us tonight. And he's going to give a short presentation and be available to answer any questions that the board might have. So, Mark, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
He's muted.
Hold on, Mark, you're muted.
Oh. Sorry. Sorry about that. Well, we'll start all over. Thank you everyone for this opportunity to present to the board. And we really believe Community Solar is a great program here in Illinois. It was made possible through legislation passed last year, part of the Climate Equitable Jobs Act. Created robust, very lucrative incentives to spur on development for renewable energy here in Illinois. And then specifically, what it means to the school district is savings and some relief from these increases in energy prices. So without further ado, I'm on the second slide. I'm not sure, Lauren, if you're tracking, but what Community Solar is, is it delivers immediate savings while supporting Illinois in reaching its renewable energy goals. Additionally, Community Solar is what we call off-site solar systems, really large solar systems built here in Illinois, shared by multiple customers. So in this case, it would not only be the Sycamore School District, but also local residents, businesses, non-for-profits, even commercial enterprises who want to enjoy the benefits of having solar. You know, a lower cost of power, being able to market that they're supporting sustainability here in Illinois, and also supporting the development of job creation as well in Illinois. And like I said, at the end of the day, the goal is to deliver a lower cost of power to the school district without having to invest any money upfront and without having to install any equipment or be responsible for the servicing of the maintenance of that equipment on site. I'm on the third slide now, which is Community Solar benefits for Sycamore School District. Our initial analysis has the school district saving up to $41,600. This may vary over time as energy prices vary over time. But for the most part, our goal is to save the school district about $41,000 a year simply by just enrolling into Community Solar. How that happens is credits get placed on your Commonwealth Edison bill. ComEd is still your delivery company. They're still your utility. As a matter of fact, ComEd is our partner and partner in the program as the utility company. This program actually helps ComEd hit their sustainability requirements. So it's really a public-private partnership where ComEd hits their sustainability goals, the state hits their sustainability goals, and the school district as a subscriber saves money by receiving 10% of the applied shared credits on their bill. It comes out to be about a five, five and a half percent savings based on your current energy spend. Again, other benefits, no upfront costs, risk-free from a standpoint of not having to install any equipment. Same ComEd bills, nothing changes on your servicing. And then, again, it's a demonstration of Sycamore's support of sustainability and job creation here in Illinois. The fourth slide is just a breakdown, again, of your energy spend in the school district and then how the savings are gained on an annual basis. We did some rough calculations. Again, these numbers change over time as energy markets change, but historically speaking, we say that the school district spends about $765,000 on electricity alone on an annual basis. We're going to apply about $416,000, so the green area in column two of credits to the ComEd bills. And the school district will keep roughly 10% of those applied credits, $41,600, with the remaining $374,000 being remitted back to us as the Community Solar developers and our partners as what we call subscription fees. So the net savings is that $41,600, $41,600, or roughly 10% of the applied credits. I'll stop there. I just threw a lot at y'all, especially at seven o'clock at night. So, and are there any questions I could address?
Is it a contract term? This is Michael DeVito here.
Okay, talking to that, yep.
Hey there, Eric. Thank you for taking the time to talk with us. Michael DeVito here, I'm a board member. I had a quick question about the contract requirements. Are we locked into a term with you guys? Will you read this?
Yes. You are. The agreement term is 10 years. And initially, that might sound like a long term. However, if you want to look at the credits, think about technically, the subscriptions are, it's like a voucher system. It's like a coupon that is owned by the school district. And you can apply them at any time. So it's really valuable to have on a go-forward basis. We require a 10-year commitment from the school district because the program, our requirements, back to the state of Illinois and to ComEd, is actually to produce power from these systems for 15 years. Given Sycamore's large energy footprint, it is, we feel a 10-year commitment is a good balance between the 15-year requirement on our end and then having to replace a customer if Sycamore goes away, which we don't intend to will. It's a large commitment to replace. Additionally, like I said, this is a coupon that you could essentially carry with you for your accounts. If we have to reduce the subscription size over time, knock on wood, if a building closes down or a school closes down, we don't anticipate that happening, but if that does, there's such high demand in the marketplace right now for this capacity, if you will, this finite capacity, that we feel that we can easily replace Sycamore with another account.
Thank you.
Mark, Eric Jones here, just had a question. You said that the savings were being targeted. Can you comment on how those savings or the credits would be affected by a change in electric rates? Whether they would go down substantially or up substantially, what that would do to that estimated savings?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I appreciate the opportunity to explain. So the credits are based on the ComEd default rates in the marketplace. So essentially, think about it this way. You get it, we're going to adjust the credits on an annual basis depending on Sycamore's energy spend. So if rates in the marketplace go down, theoretically, your energy bill should also go down with the marketplace. We are going to then apply a monetary credit equal to or trending down with the marketplace, in which case you'll get 10% of those credits. If the market goes up, not great for everyone who's paying ComEd, but your monetary credits will also trend upwards and you'll get 10% up to that $41,600 a year.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mark James Shal here. Just a question in regards to, I know you stated here that there's zero upfront costs. So I'm guessing installation, all that other stuff is completely covered?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, if there were to be issues with the panels, a couple of years, something happens to them, a bad storm, whatever, the list goes on. How does that work?
Yeah, so avoiding getting into the weeds, these systems are built off-site. As a matter of fact, multiple large solar systems in large fields, prime fields, et cetera, throughout ComEd territory are going to be used to support the required credit demand for Sycamore. We are required by law, or we're required by the program rules and regulations to always produce enough power to meet the credit requirements. It's already built into our financing models. Ongoing servicing and maintenance, regular servicing and maintenance, we should say, that's one. Two, replacement of errant panels or inverters, which are the other big component of the systems. I say all this, the point being, we are financially incentivized to make sure that those systems are running up to design performance. Because if they aren't, then we can't apply credits and we can't recoup the revenue that we need to cover our debt service. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So, Mark, what is our next steps that we were to move forward with this program?
Yeah, the systems are scheduled to be built in 2023, so they already have approval. Then it just comes down to development approval from ComEd, which we're in a queue, which, you know, we're pretty confident they'll get approved. Right now, we just need a commitment from the school board or from the district by signing a master services agreement that just says the district is interested in pursuing a Community Solar subscription. What that allows us to do is to take your load and create a reservation in our systems so that when the systems come online, we can go to what's called a final contractor, a subscription agreement. So the next step would be 11 Million Acres would send the school, the district, and MSA to review and then approve, sign that MSA.
Okay. So when would this happen? This would happen in 2023, correct?
Yes, credits and savings will be realized in 2023. Probably Q, as early as Q1 in 2023.
Yeah, so you have a master agreement with.
Amen.
So you have a master agreement with, is it with Commonwealth Edison?
I can't, I can't hear.
Test? Can you hear now? Uh-oh.
No. It's going, sorry, it's going in and out.
Now? Is it working now? Still in and out?
It's like a Verizon commercial.
I can't, sorry.
One, two, three, can you hear me?
Yep.
And you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
All right, well, so do you, your master, your organization's master agreement is with Commonwealth Edison?
Think about it in two ways. Our services agreement, there'll be a service agreement between the school district and our subscription management company called Arcadia. They manage all the subscriptions, they count billing, invoicing, and payments. There's a program agreement that is with the Illinois Power Agency, which is the governing body that oversees all of energy administration here in Illinois, as well as with ComEd. So all the developers and all the stakeholders who want to be a part of the development process of Community Solar Grid in Illinois have a, are approved vendors, that's one. And two, have a finance, a financing agreement with ComEd.
So that master agreement then, that actually controls the number of credits that your company is awarded? To dish out, basically?
It provides incentives that, and that bucket of incentives is just one form or tabular revenue source, if you will, that allows us to finance these Community Solar assets.
But how is, so how is the ultimate amount of credits that you're assigned to dole out, how is that determined?
It's based on the default rates. So, for example, the amount, the percentage of the on-bill credit value that we give, in this case it's 10%, that is based on our financing models. We have to make a certain amount of money or recoup a certain amount of money off the bill credits to pay for our internal cost of capital or debt service, as well as the ongoing servicing and maintenance. So the rule of thumb here in Illinois is 10%. In other states, you're going to see that at 3% to 5%. So that, sorry, did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but I still have more. So, as you have these credits assigned, if the default rate changes, do the credits that are assigned to you or to your organization, do they increase?
No, so we have this separate terminology. So on-bill credits are what the Sycamore School District will see. What we get as developers is really a schedule of different incentives. Tax incentives, rebates from the utility, Commonwealth Edison. And then third is an agreement from ComEd to buy what's called renewable energy credits that we help so that they can complete, so that they can claim that power being purchased on the grid is renewable energy. Those are all fixed costs for us, or those are all fixed values for us. The credits, though, that we're allowed to put on the bills and ComEd will administer on the bills are a function of the default rates on an annual basis that ComEd issues. And they will, and then the ICC, the Illinois Commerce Commission, and the IPA have to approve those rates on an annual basis. So if those default rates go up, credit values will increase. If default rates go down, credit values will decrease.
Okay, perfect. Do we get to share in that increase? Or that, or do we have to take a cut if we're in a decrease?
Technically, yes. But here's the deal. We only want to put enough credits on your bill that you can actually use. Because remember, part of the agreement that you'll have between us and between the school district and us is you have to, you have to pay 90% of the credit value back to us and you keep 10%. What we don't want to do is over-apply credits that you'll never use and therefore, we don't, we want to avoid a situation where you are paying for something you won't ever use. So every.
My concern is exactly the opposite, that, you know, prices will increase and we'll see our credits actually go down in terms of value and percentage rather than up, while you, your profits will go up and there'll be a further divide. So the gist of my question is, is there a way to design in this some kind of a scale that says that when you do better, we do better? And when you, if you don't do as well, then maybe we don't do as well. But at least to take advantage of, because in my experience, I've never seen electric prices go down. And I would be extremely surprised if in the future that happens. In fact, I would say that all portents are that electric prices are going to go up and up and up and up. And it's going to become much more expensive as we go forward, as other energy products are as well. So I'm really kind of concerned that, you know, perhaps we might be shorted in the sense that we're going to be capped when there might be, you know, further advantage to take given the price, potential pricing.
I would agree with you directionally that, you know, the market factors say that pricing should continue to increase over time for various reasons, which we could discuss later. But to your point of credits increasing, we have a finite amount of credits in a marketplace and you're right, there can be a mechanism where you share the upside, but you also have to share the downside. From our standpoint, from financing, we'd like to have a set structure and a 10% share of the on-bill credits. It's really fair. From a standpoint of what the market is for this capacity for the school district, it is in such high demand that it's really a seller's market. And there are, our feelings are that it's priced out fair enough that if we don't give it to the one customer, there's going to be a lot of other customers that are willing to take that deal.
Well, you know, I like the idea of the 10% of the credits that are available, but, you know, I'd like to see that be 10% of the credits that are available, not just locked in, you know, at one point in time when we certainly know that the costs are going to go up, so.
Yeah, that's, I understand where you're coming from. When we underwrite these projects, though, it's based on underwriting projects for the entire market and the, we can only look at energy prices that are here today and what the rolling curves are for the next few years. And quite frankly, again, the monetary value of the credits, we're going to target $41,600 a year. And if you can't use those credits, we're going to have to, you know, we're trying to do our best to size the accounts appropriately for your usage. And I just don't see us coming off a 10% of a fixed credit value where we're able to, to, you're able to share any upside in terms of more savings.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
All right, thanks, Mark, for joining us tonight. I'll be in touch with you after I superbook further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Jim, I don't know if there's any other further discussion the board wants to have. I do have the master agreement from Mark, and I have sent that off to our attorneys to look at. But then, you know, we will need to bring it to the board for a vote around down the road if that's something that the board wants to pursue.
Are there any other companies out there that are doing this, you know? Sounded like from what he was saying that there are other providers.
Not that marketing.
No.
Right.
Because I really would, I really don't, I like the 10%, but I'd like to see it floating as opposed to closed cap. Because by the time we get to the end of that 10 years, that 10% would be, yeah, might. Because by the time we get to the end of that ten years, that ten percent would be, yeah, might, might, might be nothing.
Just, just a comment on this one. I, I really think this was a creative solution to the push for solar. So, kudos to you guys, the admin team, for, for bringing this, cause I think this is definitely a better option than onsite solar, which is what we were weighing. Um, but Jim, to your point, and where I'm, I can share in your, your sentiments, I'm curious to know what the cost of solar is over just locking into a ten-year term with like a non-renewable energy provider. Like, I, and, and not to say that I would support doing that, but just to know what dollar value we are putting on solar over a maybe less expensive means of generating electricity. And, cause what we're giving up is ten years, right? We're locking in for ten years. So to me, the, the real alternative is if we go with a ten-year deal to say, I don't know, if there's a, a, another energy provider that offers nuclear as a, as a supporting means. And they can do it at fixed rate for, uh, say, a twenty percent amount, I don't know. Then to me, it goes, okay, as a district, the decision is, do we support solar at a twenty thousand dollar amount? Are we willing to leave twenty thousand dollars on the table for this solar initiative versus just the lowest cost initiative? So that's kind of what's rattling around in my head. Not necessarily, you know, the other solar options, though that would be nice, but I, I could see that being difficult to get that information. I don't know. Is, do you see that being something that's easy to find out, if there's a non-solar alternative?
I can, I've reached out to my ISBO colleagues, but I've not, I mean, I've not heard of anything like that, but I can ask around.
I, I mean, I agree, I think this is a great way to go, I just,
Yeah.
I just would like to see us kind of assure that we're gonna get that, that real discount for all those ten years.
Yeah.
In fact, if there was a flow, I mean, I'd, I'd be, I'd say, yeah, let's go.
Mark, weren't, weren't you saying that you could, that the district could still have a, an, an energy pricing agreement? And this on top of that?
Yes.
We had to negotiate.
We're locked in, we're in a, an energy consortium through ISBO, and so, uh, we do, we flash away between signing a one-year and a three-year contract, um, with whoever the provider is, um, at the time. So we are locked into a fixed rate, um, of our energy costs, but this would be savings.
This is a percent saving, savings on top of that.
Yes, you have to remember, this is all savings, this is money we don't have right now. But this is revenue that would be coming into the district.
Right. So this doesn't affect our ability, I mean, going to, back to the conversation, electricity rates generally rising, that's kind of independent, that we're locking in rates anyway.
Yes.
And on top of that, this guarantees savings. And there's no way that we would find ourselves in a situation, regardless of how the energy markets move, where we would be paying more than we currently are through this program. Now, there is a website that says, like, US-solar.com apparently is the one building the facility here in Sycamore. And all these sites that are on the Illinois, whatever, Solar Energy Association, it says they're accepting applications, so I suppose we could ask a few of them if their models are any different, but. I think that there's no way that we can lose ten years, this is fifty years, so. I'm pretty comfortable with that sort of time commitment. If there were a twenty-year or thirty-year commitment, then I might be a bit, bit more hesitant.
Well, remember, the, the actual solar panels would have been twenty, twenty-five.
Right, if we were building them ourselves, yeah.
Five-year panels?
Yeah, they've got twenty-five-year warranties on them.
Yeah, so, I mean.
They're only producing eighty-eight percent of their energy at that.
Going down to, to ten or two is actually, um, right, all stuff in there.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think overall, it's, it's a, it's a good direction. I just want to make sure, do a little due diligence to make sure we get the best deal for the district.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is our, uh, district transportation staff recognition. So we have a lot of, um, drivers and aides and staff that were able to join us today. And so I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to Lacey, and she's, she'll do a little short presentation and she'll recognize us.
I'm way more fun in the solar deck. Way more fun, way more interesting. Anyway, Lacey, um, Lacey Lance, Director of Transportation. Um, we have some of our awesome, awesome staff here with us today. Um, Transportation Assistant McKenzie, she really loves it, I just called her out right now, so. So the first slide that we're gonna talk about in the recognizing kind of of our department, which we haven't really done in the past, we've talked about it, but not really specifically, uh, are the bus drivers. So right now, we have twenty route drivers, um, six trip drivers, and we recently got a full-time sub, which is awesome. So, uh, the full-time sub shows up every morning and every afternoon, and he's kind of there for, um, anybody who needs to take off. Um, if he isn't driving a route, he's there to help us fill buses, run to the test lane, kind of do any of those tasks that we need. Um, we use him often, so there's not a lot of time where he's not driving. Um, but it's a nice resource for the staff that they have to take off, uh, during a time where they're driving and, and they can't take off any other time. So that support is really, really great for us. Um, we have seven monitors, soon to be six, but seven currently. Um, and so those are our folks who are on the bus with our, uh, specialized students. Um, they ride in support of those students on the bus. So, um, a lot of those students are in car seats, seatbelts, harnesses. Um, they ride with them in some of our outplace vans, they're kind of there to be their support. So, uh, it is a thankless job, like the bus drivers, and we would not function in a lot of ways without them. So, huge, huge, huge role. Um, we have two mechanics now, which is an improvement from. Yep, so we have two mechanics, um, and so that has helped us immensely in getting things fixed quickly. So if a route bus goes out, we can get it fixed, um, usually the same day, and then back up and operational the next day. Uh, that was not what was happening last year, which is one person. Uh, so this year, it's been awesome. Um, two office staff, that's just us.
He's just running.
Next slide, thank you. Current fleet, um, this is how many buses or vehicles that we have, that we are in charge of. Um, right now, we have thirty-four seventy-one passenger buses. Um, so those are mostly used for routes, some of them are used for trips, uh, to take our athletic teams. Um, of those thirty, we have three wheelchair buses. Um, two of our wheelchair buses are the, um, fifty-six passenger and one is a thirty-seven passenger. Uh, most of the time, the fifty-six, uh, passenger buses can seat more people, but we take the seats out to accommodate the wheelchairs. Uh, we do use those, uh, we have one that's on a route with a student right now, the other one is a backup. Um, so we do use that for smaller athletic trips as needed. Uh, then we have one twenty-five passenger bus that takes care of our outplace kids. Um, and then we have, um, of all of those buses, eight of the buses in our fleet are new to us this year. Um, four were paid with Esser. And ten of the buses in our fleet now have air conditioning, which is huge. Which is huge because, um, not only is it ungodly hot, um, in certain months, um, our specialized students, uh, generally require those air-conditioned buses because they're medically sensitive. So to have those in our fleet, um, helps some of those students ride a little bit more comfortably. Vans, we have ten vans, um, those are used for trips. Um, kind of transportation between administration to other places, conferences. Um, we transport some of our homeless students in those vans. Um, outplace routes are done in vans, depending on the size of, of the kids going to schools. Um, and then we have two activity buses, those are our white buses, they are used for in-district field trips. Um, they take some of our smaller athletic teams to work from events. Um, because they're white buses and not yellow, they can be driven by the staff. Um, the rules and regulations are a little bit different, so. Um, okay, transportation riders. Um, we have twenty-six hundred, forty-seven, um, public K through twelve regular, uh, eligible riders. Um, twelve private school, um, student eligible riders currently. That's just if they reach out to us, so St. Mary's, we are not currently transporting St. Mary's students because of a shortage of staff and fleet. Um, however, when we were kind of entertaining that idea or communicating with them, there were only twelve students who would have used that service. Uh, there are a hundred and sixteen between kindergarten and high school special education students who qualify, um, for transportation through us. And then Little Spartans, um, the IEP students, there's twenty-eight IEP students who qualify for transportation. Um, these are our actual riders, so, um, we have sixteen hundred and forty-six actual riders on our routes. Um, we are not transporting private school students, that's a future goal, I would like to be in a place where we are able to do that. Um, we have fifty special education students on a variety of routes. Um, and then this is a little bit different, for Little Spartans, we have IEP students and we have students who pay to ride. So we have twenty-one of those students on routes currently. Um, this is just kind of transportation for our out-of-district students. Uh, a lot of times when we talk about transportation, we just talk about the seventy-one passenger buses that you kind of see in our town. Um, we service our outplace students who don't, uh, who aren't educated in district. So, um, we have a bus going to High Roads in Genoa, um, with four students. We have, um, a bus going to Marklin and New Directions. So, um, Marklin and New Directions is, um, Batavia, St. Charles area. Uh, we have, uh, three students going to Marklin, one going to New Directions. Um, Crutchy, Little Friends, we have, uh, two students on that bus there in a van. And then we have Easter Seals with one student. So these are all the outplace schools that we are able to transport students to. Um, as far as the outsourced routes, um, we included those. Those are also schools that students are being educated at that are not in districts. Um, we are not transporting those students, they are being transported through, um, the, uh, school bells, parents, um, different modes of transportation. We used to transport those kids, with the shortage of drivers, um, we had to outsource some of those, uh, the last couple of years. Uh, goal would be that we get them back, uh, so we're kind of working towards that. And then, um, we have other routes that, uh, use our services also. K E C has three sessions. Um, we have one full-time driver that does nothing but drive at K E C and back. Uh, so he does that, and then we have another driver who takes our construction back and mom and kids to our offsite location, um, in a van. So we have them kind of going in two directions. Um, we do high school community trips on Tuesdays and Fridays, that's for our special education students. They take them to the grocery stores, the community centers, kind of just out in the community. Um, that happens, uh, twice a week. We have, uh, middle school communities, field trips, same thing, Mondays and Wednesdays. North Grove Community trips are on Fridays, that's for our ABLE program, they take them out into the community. Um, and then we have, um, some homeless students that are being transported by us also. Um, we split the transportation with Rochelle. And then, um, we have a van that takes a student to Mentha, um, into Cal, it's an outplace facility. Um, he spends part of his time in district with us and then part of his time at Mentha, so we take care of that as well.
Lacey, do you, do you have an idea of how much that outsourced routes costs us in the?
Um, we could get that information, I don't know off the top of my head.
I'm just curious.
It's more than, more than we would like. Uh, we would like to bring them back, you know, obviously to provide, uh, opportunities for our drivers. Um, we're hoping to keep replenishing our drivers, um, so that we get back to a place where we can do that, so. They're super high, we sought out routes, they're longer, uh, and it's nice to kind of repay the people who've been here a long time with, with those route choices. Um, so that's something we'd like to get back to, but we can get back, so. Oh, see? Well-willed.
Two-hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what we paid last year, uh, for all those outsourced routes. Um, we are able to, uh, receive some of that money back through our state transportation plan that we do. Um, so we are able to run a little of that money back, um, but.
And, and you know, what's the cost when it wasn't possible? Like, what's the difference?
I don't know.
Uh, athletic trips, um, obviously our athletes have to get to and from their sporting events. Um, so in FY twenty-two, um, we did seven-hundred-and-fifty-six trips. Those are provided by both our trip drivers and our regular route drivers, depending on time. Um, this year, so far, we've done a hundred and ninety-six trips. So, uh, you know, the, the teams are traveling and we are making it happen. So, you know, we do that on top of our regular routes, so. So, my presentation is short. Jim and I always talk about long presentations, though, um, but I just wanted to touch base. So, this is just a small group of the people that make our department run. Um, without them, there would be no students getting to school. And without them, there would be no me, and I could not function without them. Um, so I would just like to take a moment to recognize the selfless humans that get our kids to unpromisable places like every single day.
Can they, can you introduce her, can they introduce?
Yeah, so, in the back, we have Dirk. He's new to us, he's amazing, he drives a PK route. Um, his monitor is Jean Anne. She, um, calls all of her students her babies, and she treats them like they're her own. Um, Liz in the orange, she drives our Claire route, which is not for the faint of heart in the winter, so we appreciate her a lot. Um, Deb right here in front, she came from First Student, she has just an enormous amount of experience with our stu- our specialized students. She has been awesome. Um, Cindy, she is currently our longest driver in the building, she drove a route when I was here. I was eight, in case you were wondering, so she's very wild. Um, Susan, she takes care of one of our outplace routes with Cindy, they drive together. She is currently teaching the student on her route sign language. Um, he is non-verbal and without her, he'd be less verbal, so she's teaching him sign language. And Lori, she is back with us, she, um, is in another country route, she goes to Genoa. Um, also not for the faint of heart in the winter. Um, and then there's just a lot of folks that aren't here that, um, are, are, oh, wait, Sandra, she's hiding behind the pole. Sandra, Sandra does our Marklin Mains route, and I rode that route with her, and she is the bomb dot com. She is driving and managing students at the same time. She has some of our non-verbal students, um, and so they, uh, require just different communication, right? And she has blankets on the bus for them, she has, uh, toys, she has different measures of checking their temperature. She's, she's a rock star. Uh, it's awesome when you get to ride the routes because you see things that you would not normally get to see, right? I did a PK route and, uh, I moved the whole time, it, I never sat down, it was a lot. Uh, I've ridden, you know, on some of the longer routes and it's a, it's a, it's a far. We have drivers who start at six-ten and, in the morning, and sometimes they don't get back, you know, off their evening route until five, and that varies with the weather, obviously. So, um, in the past, our department has, um, obviously been noticed, recognized, um, but not really spotlighted like they deserve, I feel. Uh, and so, these people are amazing and there would, there would be no me without them, so. So, our goal, obviously, is to, um, the next summer at the high school, when it's not, um, pitch black and raining, to have you come, some of our buses, um, some of the new ones, you know, um, you know, see what we're trying to do moving forward, um, but if you have any questions?
Do you have, do you have other goals, Lacey?
Oh, I have a lot of goals.
A lot of, that excites me.
Yeah, I have a lot of goals. Um, we're trying to get a five-year bus rotation plan, um, you know, we'll have some older buses that need some attention. Um, so we're working on that, um, how to get the staff the, the best vehicles possible, right? Because that's what they deserve, that's what the students deserve. So what that looks like financially, so, um, that's a goal. That's the biggest goal, really. Um, we wanted to make sure that this, we were kind of rebuilding like the Cubs, like the World Series Cubs, but not like the current Cubs. So we were trying to rebuild as far as making the employees feel valuable, right? Because people want to work hard for you if they feel valued. So that was our biggest goal, is to change the morale in the department. And then with that, you know, word of mouth is a huge thing. So if people are going working for us, then that will make other people want to come work for us. And then that will kind of increase the, uh, the, the route lengths. And, you know, we try to keep our routes under an hour, sometimes that's not possible. So, you know, with more staff, that creates more opportunity, right? So that's, that's a goal. Um, and everything changes, every, every, every day brings kind of a new challenge. So, you know, we have things that were, that are ever-changing as far as goals go, but those are kind of some of the immediate ones. Replenish our staff that kind of happened with COVID and the driver shortage. Um, keep replenishing our fleet, um, and just making sure that they come to work every day feeling like someone cares about them and that we care about the job we're doing, so. Sure, sweet, guys.
Thanks.
Better than food. Also, don't be offended, but they're probably all gonna leave.
You don't want to listen to me, Tab?
Asses to this, guys.
I just want to say before everybody leaves. But Lacey's done a great job talking about the drivers, the monitors, the job that they do, the tools, and, um, we can transportation director and assistant is no easy feat, and a lot of times it takes years of experience. And these two have picked it up in six months, seven months.
They're awesome.
I mean, on the go during the middle of the year, and these two are just. I mean, on the go during the middle of the year and these two are knowledgeable as anybody I've ever worked with in terms of the rules and regulations for school buses, uh, once you arrive, let's not, tests, you name it. So in addition to the drivers and the monitors, they've done an awesome job. Uh, I just want to spotlight Lacy and McKimby because they, they picked it up. They ran with it. They've done incredible work over the last seven months, six, seven months. So, um, thank you very much.
He's had a lot of first years.
I was having a pleasure riding with him for two weeks, welding it.
Don't be a stranger.
Keep those cookies coming down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, boss!
Love you!
See you, meatball.
The meatball, I know, right? I should put that in the president's desk.
The last thing that I have for the board tonight is, uh, the ever-interviewed tax levy.
Exciting.
So exciting. Did try to switch it up a little this year, so let's see if he recognizes some of the things that I threw in there.
He recognizes some of your old things.
Turn me a quiz later, so. Uh, no, so just, uh, for the, the public at hand here, um, tax levy is essentially how the district, uh, pays their bills every year. Um, it's the largest source of revenue that we receive. It's the most stable, um, resource that we also receive. This money will actually pay for the expenses that we incur in the school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we do have some requirements that we have to follow, um, in certain timelines. Uh, but ultimately, the board has to adopt a final levy, um, no le-, no later than the last Tuesday in December. And then we have to certify it with the county clerks. We're actually in two different counties, um, mostly in DeKalb, but we do have, um, some properties in Kane County. Um, so we do have to file with both of them. We receive a majority of our money in large chunks in June and then September, um, but we do get some money sprinkled in in those months in between. So what the, the lobbying process looks like, so I'm here tonight giving a preliminary update. Um, and then I'll come back to the board, um, at the end of November and ask you guys to pass the final resolution. And then we'll take that and file that with the county clerk. Um, just the process of how we come up with the numbers, uh, we have to look at what our, um, estimated EAVs, um, are going to be. Um, so we work with the county assessors on that. Um, how much do we ask for? Are we under the tax cap? We're gonna go through all these words here coming up. Um, board adopts the levy, we file the certification, um, in December. And then, uh, property owners are able to file abatements, um, that go against that levy. So you're actually not going to get all that money that we asked for. So we have to take all that information into account. So what is EAV that I just spoke about? Equalized assessed valuation. So for those of you that are homeowners, um, you should know what this, um, means. You'll see this on your tax bill. Um, this is your property valuation, um, for individuals and then total property that come into the school district as part of our tax levy. Um, why is this, um, word so important to us? This is how we determine the extension that we're able to get, uh, like I said, to, to pay our bills, uh, once our limiting rate or our tax rate is null. And so there's some fun calculations. You guys can look at that up there. But, um, like I said, we do get money from DeKalb County and Kane County. Um, and so there's two different calculations that we have, um, to come up with our final extension. This was using the twenty-twenty-one tax levy information. So, um, we got about thirty-two million dollars in, uh, levy dollars last year between the two counties. So EAV by type, um, in Sycamore, we're heavily residential, so about seventy-three percent, um, residential. Uh, we get about fifteen percent from commercial properties. Um, we sell a lot of farmland out here, so about seven point four percent there. And then we do get a small amount from, uh, industrial properties at four point five percent. So that's how our levies broken out. Also part of, um, the calculation, um, with your total extension, new construction is a part of that. So you look at your existing, um, homes or properties and then you also look at the new construction properties that are taking place, um, within your district. So this comes into play and I'm not, I'm not going to go through and read this, but we'll look at the, um, calculation coming up and why new construction is so important to us. Um, this is just a graph of the history of new construction. So, uh, you can see this goes back to twenty-fourteen. Um, you were kind of just starting to come back up in that year. You can see peaked in twenty-seventeen, um, at about twelve million dollars, kind of started to come back down. And now we're starting to go back up, um, with the twenty-one levy. And that, um, is gonna keep going up with the twenty-two levy, which I'll get to here soon. Um, again, this is just a chart showing, um, what CPI has looked like over the last, um, ten years. What EAV has looked like in property, the limiting rate or our tax rate. And then that extension, which is the actual revenue that the district receives, uh, through the tax levy. Um, so you can see, um, the difference in CPI. I'm gonna show you guys a chart here, what CPI has looked like over the last thirty years. New property, again, we kind of peaked in twenty-seventeen. It's gone back down and now we're starting to see that come back up. Our limiting rate, our tax rate, has actually gone down, um, which is good for property owners. Um, in the fact that the rate has gone down, but their property has actually gone up in valuation. So, um, which the district does not control. That's done through, um, the assessor's office. Um, and then you can see our extension is able to go up, um, based on what CPI is. So another word that we talk about a lot is PTEL. Um, so that is a short acronym for Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. Um, so Sycamore is a PTEL district. Um, this was a law that was extended into the collar counties in nineteen ninety-one and then Cook County, um, implemented that in nineteen ninety-four. Um, so PTEL is there to limit the increases in the property tax extensions. The extensions is what the district is able to get in revenue. Um, we commonly call it the tax cap, although this phrase is very misleading because homeowners believe that that means that their property taxes are capped. Um, but really, that's not what it is at all. It allows for the district to receive a limited increase in tax extensions on property. Um, so what is the limitation? So it's limited to the lesser of five percent or the increase in the national CPI, all urban consumers. There's a lot of CPIs out there. We always look at CPIU. And it's always comparing, um, what the CPIU is in the December before, um, the CPI comes out. So CPI that we're using now for the twenty-twenty-two levy came out in December of twenty-twenty-one. Um, this limitation does not apply to the new construction, which is good news for us because we're able to recoup that fair share of tax revenue. That doesn't mean it's a dollar for dollar. So if we have twelve million dollars in new construction, that doesn't mean we get twelve million dollars in new revenue. We get about sixty thousand dollars per one million dollars, um, in new revenue. Um, this limitation also comes into play when we talk about D-SUB, which is another acronym, uh, for the debt service extension base. And that comes into play when we're looking, um, to sell bonds and what our extension base is and how much money we can actually, um, take out in our debt service. That D-SUB increases by the minimum of CPI or five percent each year, so we're able to get some more debt, um, extension D-SUB here. There has not been a CPI of five percent since the inception of PTEL until now. So, um, the levy's gonna look a little different than it has over the last thirty years. So this is a historical perspective, uh, just looking at CPI. So the first ten-year period, CPI averaged about two point five-two. Second ten-year period, it averaged about two point four-nine. And then the third ten-year period averaged about one point nine-five, even with this five percent, um, CPI for twenty-two of the year. So the CPIU that came out in December of twenty-one was actually seven percent. But since we are PTEL, we're only able to access five percent of that. Um, so again, just, you know, knowing how we explain that, um, to people because they see that seven percent and think the district's able to access all of that money, you know, we're not. Um, I like this chart because, um, if, if I do receive phone calls from property tax owners and, um, you know, they say my, my rate's going down, but my, um, but my property bill is going up, you know? What are you doing in school district? So, um, I like this because it explains, uh, how these all correlate to each other. So if your EAV is flat, um, and, uh, the, sorry. Given CPI, if the existing EAV remains flat, the tax rate will remain flat. If your EAV is decreasing, your tax rate will actually increase. Um, if the EAV is increasing, the tax rate will decrease, which is where we've been, um, for the last, I think, seven years. Um, and that's where we'll be at again this year. Our tax rate will decrease. That does not mean that your personal property tax bill is also going to decrease if your home, um, valuation is going up. So how do we calculate that tax rate or the limiting rate? Um, so it's this fun formula that we get to use. Um, it is, uh, the prior year extension, so the total non-revenue that we receive. You multiply that times one plus the lesser of five percent or CPI, so it's five percent this year. And then you divide that out by your estimated EAV for the incoming levy and then you subtract out your new construction. So new construction is outside of the tax cap. Your debt service payments are also outside of the tax cap. So we're able to levy for the debt that we've incurred and that we have to pay back. Kind of talk about that next time. So we'll skip to this fun chart. Um, so it's kind of like, do you guys remember in, um, grade school where it's like how, uh, a bill becomes law? This is kind of what this chart is. So how the tax levy becomes the tax extension. Um, so you have your original levy and then those fun folks in Cook County get this, um, loss percentage added to their levy, um, which we don't have here. Um, but then since we are tax capped, um, we have to reduce our rates by fund. That's all school districts, um, have, um, have to follow that. And then, um, we have to reduce that by the, the PTEL limiting rate. Um, and then the final rate and extension are calculated and then we start to receive our money. Uh, so we're in the place right now where we don't know what EAV is going to be for next, um, for the twenty-two levy. So we work with the county assessor's office and they send us what they think it's gonna be. And so then we kind of have to play with those numbers and make sure that we're gonna ask for, um, as much money that is owed to us. And we always say we don't want to leave any money on the table. So we have to make sure that we're calculating what we think the EAV is gonna be and what our new construction is gonna be. And so I have a fun, um, spreadsheet that I use, but I won't show that to you guys. Um, so this next thing, um, I'd just like sharing this with you guys because this is what our computation report looks like, uh, that we get from the assessor's office. Um, so again, I get one that says estimated on top of it, so that's what I use to prepare these numbers for you guys tonight. Um, but this would be the final computation report that we get from both DeKalb and Kane County. And they're, they use the same software, which is awesome because then they look the same. I've seen some other counties and their computation report is really hard to read. So I'm thankful for that. So just the main points I'll, I'll show on here. Um, this has the total EAV broken out by type, so farm, residential, commercial, um, and so on down the line. That next column, um, is, uh, has the new property amount on it. And where you see the word overlap, that's gonna be, uh, the Kane County amount. So this is the DeKalb report, but it includes the Kane County amounts on it. If you were to look at Kane County, it would also have an overlap and it would be DeKalb's number. Um, so you're able to see that. So if you go down below, these are all of the funds that we're able to levy for. Um, so we have the levy requests that we ask for. Um, if there's a maximum rate for each of those funds, um, currently there's ones for the O and F funds, so we're only able to ask for, um, up to seventy-five cents for that one. Uh, the special ed line, um, eighty cents. And then, um, lease or purchase and rental, um, five cents on that. Otherwise, um-
Who determines that?
Um, the, the law.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
The law.
Okay.
Um, so, um, there's also one for, uh, the working cash fund and for, uh, the fire, um, health life safety. So that's also on there. Um, and so we go through, we figure out, um, all the calculations on here. The non-PTEL extensions, so that's calculated, but then they have to apply that PTEL factor because we're a PTEL district. Um, so they apply that and that's how they come up with our final, um, total extension, uh, which is what we start to receive in June then. Next, another big thing, uh, that we have to talk about is truth and taxation. So this is if your current levy request excluding bond and interest is more than five percent greater than the prior year's extension. You are required to do a truth and taxation hearing. Um, our board has always been very transparent on what we are asking for. And so, um, we've not seen, at least since I've been in this position, we've never asked for over the five percent. But we've always continued to do the truth and taxation hearing, again, just for transparency purposes. Um, I will tell you, I'm asking for more than five percent just because CPI itself is five percent. So in order to, um, garner all that revenue that is owed to the district, we're gonna have to ask for more than five percent. Um, so there's certain, um, rules that we have to follow, um, and timelines. Uh, there's a notice that we have to put in the newspaper and is very specific on what it has to look like. No more than, um, uh, fourteen days and no less than seven days before the date of the public hearing. It has to be at least an eighth page in size. It has to be enclosed in blackboard or not less than a fourth inch wide. The smallest type has to be twelve, um, point five. It must not appear in the classified or legal section of the newspaper and it may not, it must not contain any additional information not required by the law. And then a public hearing has to be held. Um, we always hold that the same night as the final resolution. Um, we have to explain the reasons, um, for the levy increase. Um, we must allow the public to speak if they'd like and it may be part of a regular board name, but, um, um, it cannot coincide with the hearing on the proposed budget, which we never fall into that, um, category. So I did include for you guys what our, um, notice looks like. And so we do, we have to follow and Lacy knows this because she's worked with the Chronicle. We have to be very specific on what it needs to look like. Um, and then we have to make sure all the numbers are correct in it. Um, and then that gets proved and sent off to, um, for us, the Daily Chronicle, that is a, um, a local circulation, that fulfills many of yours' plans. Also new this year is this Public Act one oh-two oh eight nine five. So this is requiring all school districts to disclose to the public at a public hearing, um, when we certify the budget, um, or the, the budget and the levy, the cash reserve balances of all funds held by the district related to its operational levy. Um, they did not give us a lot of guidance on this. In fact, um, our attorney sent something out and said, basically what the public act is, they don't tell us how we have to disclose that to the public. Um, if it can just be something that we put up on the screen, if it's something I have to actually address. Um, but, so that's something that when we do the hearing and when we do the final resolution, I will share with the board what the cash reserves are for each fund. So that's something new this year, um, that we have to do. Okay, so current assumptions from the ten of levy, we know that the CPI is five percent. Um, and working with DeKalb and Kane County, um, our estimated EAV percent change from twenty-twenty-one is about eight percent. Our estimated new construction, um, is about twelve point five million. So that's up from last year. So looking at, uh, the extension, um, compared twenty-one to twenty-two, so, um, I will be asking for a six point nine percent, six point nine-two percent increase. So again, CPI itself is five percent. So we have to at least ask for the five percent. And then, uh, we have twelve point five million dollars in new construction. So that adds on another almost two percent in what, um, we're allowed to ask for. Um, the debt service extension, um- Um the debt service extension, um we're looking at a four point nine two percent increase. Again, that's just to cover our debt, so that's outside of the cap. Um we have to levy for what our debt is um in order to pay um those back. So then the total estimated extension uh from last year to this year um is about a six point five eight percent increase. So what does that look like um from a tax rate perspective? Um so just looking at our operating rate, um the change is down about um six, six cents, seven cents. Um taking the bond and interest rate into account, um we add that in, and so it's a total change of about six, almost seven, almost seven cents. Um so our estimated tax rate is five point nine three. So what does this look like um to the existing taxpayer? Again, these are just estimated amounts, um so don't don't take this dollar for dollar. Um but we like to calculate this for the homeowners so they can see what this looks like. Um so we just break it out based on a hundred thousand uh values. Um so for someone with a hundred thousand dollar assessed home value, this would be a savings of twenty-three dollars just on your school district portion of your bill. And then um going all the way up to a home value that's um at four hundred thousand dollars would be about a ninety-two dollar decrease on your bill for the school district portion only.
Assuming your house value didn't change.
Correct. Yes. Um so our levy calendar, um tonight I would ask the board to adopt the tentative levy. Um we'll do that advertisement in those specific dates that we're required to do uh for the truth and taxation hearing. Um I would bring this back to the board at the November twenty-ninth meeting. We'll hold the hearing, and then um I'll ask the board to approve the final levy. We'll file it with the clerk. Um so in March, late March, early April is where they'll verify the levies. So they'll have um final um levy and um extension amounts for us. And then uh once that's certified and I sign off on everything, then uh the county sends out the tax bills. And then um we get our first large payment in June. Uh but we do get a, I would I would say a larger amount in May because um we do have a lot of homeowners within our county that uh pay their taxes early. Um so um we do get a good chunk of change in May also, but those two large tax bills come in um June and September for us, so. That's a lot. So I have an answer. Any questions that we have?
Nicole, can you comment on why the debt service costs are going up in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, so the um. Um so if you remember, Eric, we've um strategically worked with P M A on restructuring our bonds and slowly moving that percentage up every year. Um and so. So yeah, that's that's our increase um because we sold those bonds last year, those twenty twenty-nine bonds. Yep. So um we wanted to keep that amount under a certain threshold, um but that is gonna increase.
And I just I just wanted to comment, you said we, you said the district has to ask for the five percent. I just wanted to clarify, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
We're choosing to, and I understand the the rationale behind that. Anybody who's been to our meetings for the last several years would certainly understand the contractual obligations that we've entered into that are to require a significant expenditure along with the fifty million dollars worth of facility work that needs to be done at the high school, et cetera, et cetera. And our our costs are obviously going up proportionally to inflation or should be in in various areas, so I just wanted to.
That's correct. Yes, you you do not have to ask for the full C P I, and those um select few districts that are very um wealthy um might not necessarily do that. Yep.
Nicole, just a quick question. So in looking at at this, first of all, I think it's really presented well, um need a lot of sense. And then you got to the end, and I I got confused again when I was looking at the bottom line impact on the tax rate. I thought I was following along perfectly. Um so I guess where I'm hitting a snag is, and and maybe rather than asking a direct question, just in general, what do you think? Like, what would have a really positive impact on the district? Uh what would be like a windfall if there was a a lot of, you're saying like a lot of new construction? If all of a sudden we had just huge growth in new construction, but not an increase in existing uh homes' E A V value? Right, that's the most the most important thing, is my understanding of that right?
Yeah, if we were able to have a lot of new growth. Um and I know we've talked about, and the city would probably say that too, we want to be careful we don't have too much growth because with that comes cost to the district as far as then um more more students than more cost.
That was, and that's kind of where I was going with this is, I just think back to the numbers, the students just being flat. And so I'm I'm just scratching my head, wondering like, wait, like, is there a storm brewing? Or what's like, and you look, you know these numbers, like, are you are you seeing any trends? Or do you see, or can you forecast what you think will happen?
Let me get my head.
Yeah.
Um you mean as far as like student growth or enrollment growth?
I mean, like, is that twelve point five million indicative of of five years from now, student growth?
It could be potentially. It really depends on where the growth is happening, what type of families are moving into those homes. Um this could be, you know, the the fifty-five and older um properties that are going in, which those people don't bring as students, but they bring as revenue. Um which is good news for us. Um uh you know, a lot of our growth is happening in um like the Kirkland Estates uh out there. Um north, out by North Grove, Sigmore Creek, and um across the street there. Um but and and we do know that North Grove is is at bursting at the seams. So they are bringing students into that area. But we do see many students move in more of our mobile places. So like West um is one of our schools where we see a lot of mobility in our students. So that's obviously offsetting some of the new students that are are coming into us, and that's why we've just been flat for the last ten years. Um but I don't I don't see anything that's jumping out at me where we're like, well, we're gonna have to have to build a new school or something like that, which I know Steve's gonna touch on in our boundary study, but nothing that's jumping out to me.
Bottom bottom line is the funding mechanism for schools, you can't win either way. So either you get more students and more costs and capped money from housing, or you get new construction, which also typically brings new kids. The the answer to the question is better state funding formula and development that is not residential.
Yeah.
That goes to Sycamore and not to a neighboring community.
Right.
So that's where you can actually start to make headway. Um and just be glad you're not a district that might border us to the east that has five hundred homes under contract right now, and they just approved sixteen hundred more to be built in the next five to seven years. That's that's uncontrolled growth.
Yes.
Um at least this is controlled growth, manageable growth, maybe a better way to say it.
Yep. Any other questions?
Is there a motion to approve tentative levy resolution as presented?
Approve.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Bren?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Dombach?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Well, um a lot of uh conversation, a lot of information presented tonight. I'm bringing up the rear here with the district boundary study, and really just kind of an update in terms of where we're at. So just wanna review that just a little bit tonight, um wanna review progress, talk about a projected timeline. Um and just wanna start out by saying that as a reminder, folks, the boundary study really is effective usage of facilities, staffing, transportation, and other district services uh for balance enrollment. So as Nicole just kind of talked about in terms of construction and growth, um North Grove is is our largest school in terms of capacity. It's also our largest school in terms of enrollment. Um so just trying to find a way um to balance enrollment throughout the school district. Uh this was done several years ago. Um the community has grown, not quite the way that it was anticipated, but the community has grown. So um really just an opportunity to look at our current enrollment and see how we might be able to balance that a little bit better. However, we also recognize that any change in the boundaries will have a direct impact on students and families. Um so we're gonna try to do our best to take all them variables into consideration. I'll talk about how we're gonna do that um here in just a second. Throughout the process, I felt it was important to consider all options. As we've had some preliminary meetings here this fall, uh Nick and Nicole and I have been involved with that. We've involved Lacey here recently because of transportation. Uh Mark Ekstrom has been involved. Um I felt it was really important to at least talk about all options and kind of put them all out on the table. However, we've already been able to ru- rule some of those things out. And when I said all options, I I said all options. So two things that I'm just gonna use it as an example are open enrollment and attendance centers. Um while those might have been able to balance enrollment a little bit, we they really aren't feasible for us uh because of limitations for transportation. Um those can get kind of crazy also, especially something like open enrollment. Um didn't even didn't even really matter because from a transportation perspective, we can't make that work, at least not at this time. Uh so moving forward, we're looking to consider options that are feasible. I've had conversations with parents who would like to see us do open enrollment to have more flexibility. Um we can't consider that moving forward because we've just got limitations that are beyond our control. So we've progressed to a form where we can, where we want to solicit some community feedback. This is the first opportunity for community to really give us some feedback on on what they think is important as we look at this boundary study. So this initial survey, there'll be other opportunities for feedback. This initial survey really is just gonna have two questions, and I'll show you what those look like here in just a second. Um we want families to tell us, what's what's your priority? You know, we've identified a couple of, a handful of um issues that that we think are gonna be important, whether from the school district's perspective or from families' perspectives. And then we provided an open response. So if we didn't address what you think is a priority on the first question, the second question is an opportunity to tell us uh whatever is on your mind. So from a timeline perspective, then we'll take all of that that survey input, we'll start to narrow potential options. We'll share those options. What we'd like to do is is initially, I taught, I I had imagined um having multiple board meetings where we would have, maybe even come to town hall type of meeting. Um what was done previously was a little bit different. Um there were kind of town hall meetings. They weren't necessarily board meetings, is my understanding, but we would go out into the elementary communities. So I'm gonna refer to elementary communities a couple of times tonight. We'll go to North Grove, we'll go to North, we'll go to West. Those meetings were open to anybody, they're public meetings. But they're held in those buildings specifically to um have open dialogue with that community or that portion of our community. So we'll take some some working options to those groups um and gather feedback. We'll present what those options are, um gather feedback, no decisions at that point. And that's not necessarily, those may not be the the directions that we move. Um but we want to give the community an opportunity to see what we're thinking and then solicit feedback. After the each of those meetings, um we'll review the feedback and then ultimately take all of that or the administrative team that I mentioned earlier, but the entire administrative team. Uh live opportunities for staff to give us feedback as well, but then ultimately come up with a recommendation to the Board of Education. Um one of the questions I've been asked several times is, any changes are gonna be implemented next year? And I will tell you that my response is always pretty much the same. I would recommend that the board implement those changes and the district implement those changes as soon as we're ready. Um making a decision and then prolonging that for any reason can really create a a lot of um challenges, for lack of a better word. So when we're when we're ready to make those uh changes, thanks, Chris, um I would recommend them to do that. Now, at the same time, in the process of of looking at elementary boundaries, if there's an issue that's unforeseen and we do have to prolong it, I think we need to be open to that. But um I would recommend that we look to implement any changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year if possible. So this is the first question. Uh I worked with Communications Department, they were super helpful in developing the the survey. And there's a letter that will go with this, not necessarily a letter, a message, uh that will go with this that kind of explains what we're looking for. Um that will include some of the information we talked about tonight. From the school district perspective, we're looking at balancing enrollment. Um but we recognize again that this is gonna have an impact on families, a direct impact on families, so trying to be understanding about that. Um but then this is uh this is actually the second question. The first one is whether or not, actually, there's two, whether or not you have kids in the, students in the district uh that are elementary age students? And then if so, what school in the district do they attend? This is the third question. So we ask them to rank um these items in terms of what's important to them. So they can actually, I'm gonna use the laser pointer online. You can click and drag these and move them around so that you can put these uh issues, for lack of a better word, in order of importance. So number one is most important, number seven is least important. Um but you can move these around, and then we'll be able to um take this information and identify what the community felt was most important. This is the second question. So whether we've addressed it in the previous question or not, what do you think is important for us to take into consideration? So this'll take a little bit longer uh to sift through that uh and try to develop things in terms of what the community tells us is important, but we're gonna take that into account as well. Uh I'm gonna show you the the map software for just a second, I'll do that here in a moment. But before I do that, this is just a a projected timeline. And uh there's a little bit of flexibility in here that in here. But in November, December, we would open the community survey, uh review the input, and then develop potential options. I've talked to to Lauren in the Communications Department, the survey is ready to go out as soon as we're ready, so it could go out as early as tomorrow morning. Uh we'll gather, we'll send the survey out, gather that input, and then start to develop um some options. In January, we'd like to get out to the elementary communities, so get to each of the five elementary buildings and share um some options in terms of changes to boundaries, and then gather feedback from those communities. In February, my goal would be to present recommendations to the Board of Education. Let those sink in a little bit, so present those in in February, um maybe at the beginning of the month. Give it a couple of weeks and then revisit those at the end of the month, so we're not making decisions necessarily right away. But then in the spring, finalize any changes to the boundaries and then plan for implementation. Any questions? I'm gonna get up and and move over and show you the software, just what the software looks like, if there isn't any questions before I do that. Two questions. One, who is a recipient of the survey? Is it anybody with a child in the district currently all the way to a senior? And anybody with a child in the district or anybody in the community, period. Go ahead. And we we went back and forth on this. There will be some families in the community who haven't started a family yet, have have little kids that aren't in the elementary school yet. So we want to give them an opportunity to give us feedback. If you've got older students, if you had students that are graduated in your empty nesters. Um we just feel like it would be valuable to give them an opportunity to give us feedback. So really, it's anybody in the community.
Sorry, you had to.
I have no, 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 it's a question. Um in in regards to, I know, I knew you said this is this is the projected timeline, and when a decision is made not to prolong that. So I get that the, I'm I'm gonna ask this specific question, but also with an understanding that there is some fluidity to this. Uh the question is, is does a spring decision, so to mock this up as a a potential, if we're getting that information in February, making the decision in March, call, maybe early April, does that allow enough time for the district to make the change? Like, would that work? Like, I don't I don't know how quick that is to have something change like that. Maybe it's real easy, or maybe it's super difficult, I have no idea.
So that that's a really good question, and that's been a big part of the conversation so far, is if is if we make, so I'm gonna be um kind of transparent here. The software that I'm gonna show you is just um one quick look. What it allows us to do is mock up different options. I did not want to show that for obvious reasons, I did, you know, don't wanna um, because we're just kind of playing around with it right now. Don't wanna give people any indication that we're kind of leaning in one direction or the other. We've talked about multiple options. Um I can tell you that we're not looking at wholesale massive changes across the district. We recognize that any change is gonna be significant to the families that are impacted though. So at this time, I think as long as the decision is made in a reasonable timeframe, I think that we can do that. But it's going to have impact, communicating that families, working with Lacey and Transportation, but that also potentially impacts staffing and assignments. So that has to be done before the end of the school year. But I think if the decision is made in the spring, it gives us the opportunity to do that.
So on like a situation where you're building a new school and now we're, you know, all these new students are going to the new school and it's, it could be very complex. This, any change, obviously it's going to affect kids, but not, it's not going to be so many kids where this is going to be just too much even, you know, it's all new classrooms and all of our stuff.
So, and that's a really important point that I haven't brought up tonight. We haven't talked a lot about, the last time there was a boundary study is when North Grove was being built. Those were significant changes to boundaries because we had a large number of students moving to one school. We don't have this this time around. We're really kind of tweaking boundaries. And while there will be changes, it will not be as substantial as it was last time around.
So building off of James's first question, how will community members who are not having students in the district get the survey?
So we'll take advantage of every path that we can, whether it's social media. We can send this survey to families that are within the district, but you're right, we can't, we don't have email addresses necessarily. So we'll have to use social media and other outlets. And I don't know, Lauren, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly write up a press release and maybe our partners in the media will help us out with that, spread the word. But also get it posted on our website too, and just see if there's any opportunity to reach anyone else beyond just those that follow us on social media or receive our emails.
Okay. That sounds great. And the second comment more is, I think something like this, like where you're talking about making a change and it being strategic, I think the procedure is all of the decision. Because really, like, if you invest in this procedure and this process, the decision just happens. So I really like the laid out procedure you have here. To me, I'd really be interested to hear what Jim or Steve or some of the other tenure board members have to say, having witnessed a prior boundary study, and what that looked like, you know, what the procedure looked like. But again, it's compared to the North Grove piece where this is without the North Grove piece. But just knowing, going into this not having seen this before, I think this process you laid out seems airtight. So I'm going to knock on wood, but I like, I think you've covered all the bases. And I think that this will bring to surface like the best decision, so kudos to you on that.
I appreciate that, I can't take too much credit because we went back to the boundary study process before and then tried to utilize that. But I would be open to suggestions too. I didn't live through that, and this is one of the things that I've not done before in my experience, so I'm still kind of learning a little bit. Again, you know, Jim, Steve, and any of the board members, I would welcome input. In terms of the timeline, the process that we've got laid out, we want to make sure that we've got a timeline that will get us to where, get us to a decision in the spring, or the ability to make a decision in the spring. Way off factors, one thing I haven't touched on is that we've been in touch with the city. You know, they have conversations about projected growth and what that's, what they think that's going to look like, taking into account that we can make decisions, not projections now, but those may or may not come true. And I think it's essential that community members and families have that opportunity to feedback. So I'd be open to suggestions or comments. I'm moving over to the computer.
I would just share my concern is with the survey. We've actually talked about this before, probably during COVID times, Steve. I think a survey is a great way to garner information from our community. So don't get me wrong, buying with a survey going out. When I read those, putting those things that are most important to our families in order, the one that says that my students stay at their school, my concern is, years ago, this school district sent out a survey and asked an open-ended, probably predictable question like that on a survey, and it garnered 97%. But there was no way our district could ever bring it to fruition. I suspect in this boundary study, if 97% of our families say they'd like their elementary kids to stay at their home school, there's no way we can make that happen. I think I, at least in this previous survey, when I did have elementary schools and did weigh in, and I was one of those 97%, I found it maddening. Like, why ask if you can't, if that's something you can't honor? So I just, I could be imagining it wrong. Maybe people are like, oh yeah, I'd love to go to a different school. I just don't imagine that to be the case, and if that's not really an option for us, I'd rather not ask.
Well, I think your point's really good, and I will say that's something I wrestle with personally because we have talked about that. And I tend to, and since then, really tried to stay away from asking the question that we can't fulfill. At the same time, I wrestle with giving people a chance to tell us what's on their mind. So I included it here because I wanted to give that opportunity for input. However, I don't understand exactly what you're saying. And for some students, we can't guarantee that we're going to keep them in their home school or their current school. I get emails and calls from time to time. Kids do want to move, families do want to move their students for a variety of reasons, and that's a pretty small percentage. So one of the reasons I wanted to kind of talk about it tonight is that if that's, if any of those seven things that I asked Lauren to put on the survey, if we don't want any of those seven, now's the time, pull it. We can pull it before it goes out, as early as tomorrow or if I can.
I actually found the other ones, like class size. That's to me why this boundary study, not just that, but the other options that were there. Those were all really valid. You know, I kind of thought about how I removed the one I didn't like, how I would have rated those, what I would have ranked first. And I think those are all really great reasons to have a boundary study. And, you know, making schools more equitable is a really great thing. That there's a reason we're doing it, and it's, the bottom line is not all students going to be able to stay where they are now.
I think you raise a good point. I think part of looking at these sorts of surveys is understanding what kind of information you're getting back from it. And I think if it was just a pick your favorite or check the top three sort of thing, then you might lose out on the rest of the important information, because that's the only thing they're telling you. But since it's a ranked choice sort of feedback, I think even if everyone says that's your number one, well, you still can look at two, two and three and four and go, okay, we still got the information we need as far as what their other priorities are. And if you don't give them the chance to put that as box number one, you're going to get it on page two in the free form input where they're going to tell you anyway. So it's kind of just how I feel, I get what you're saying. I don't want to necessarily frustrate people by saying, well, I screwed it, but then I disregarded it, but.
And that's essentially what we're doing. I mean, it really is. And I, and I, you know, to what you just said Eric, I agree with you. I think having them rank it is really important. Because a lot of, all of the other ones besides that one, I think it'll be really interesting to see what's most important. I think at this previous, you know, when my kids were in elementary school and the district put out that survey, the 97%, you know, I had the opportunity to say, so what was the percentage that wanted that? And then they shared 97%, which was great, and then I said, so why aren't we doing it then? Well, actually, it was nothing we could ever really bring to fruition. Well, that was just so maddening and frustrating for many parents. Like, why do you want to know if you can't do anything about it? I don't know. And you're right, they probably could put that in the box, and if they do, I guess because we're not asking them to rank it, I don't know, will there be a percentage of how many people wrote that in the box that we're ignoring? I don't know.
It's going to show up on question one or question two.
Right.
By, even though I would tell people right now, it's overrated. Because my kids moved with one year left in grade school, three years left in grade school, and they ended up with twice as many friends. They were just fine. They were, they were more worried about it than their mom and dad were. But they got over it and they ended up with a large group of friends, which was a benefit. But it's going to show up in one or the other. I think you leave it in, but I think maybe we need to put a little statement on there that says.
The goal.
The goal is informational, there is no guarantee we'll be able to honor even a high ranking request based on the parameters the district has to operate under. So that at least they know upfront, because they don't all watch the board meeting or attend the board meeting or pay attention to the board meeting, so.
Why do you think it's important that we know how many people want their students to stay at their home school, current school?
I can live with it not being there, but I think it's going to show up in question two anyway. Because I think parents put a big value on that, even though I disagree with that placement myself.
And the reason for the surveys is to give them an opportunity to tell us, again, whether it's question one or question two, to give us their voice. So I think it's going to show up, and if it's not one, it's two. I think we could add a disclaimer. And if the board's okay with that, kind of based on the feedback, I'll go back and have a conversation, you know, with Lauren in the morning and we can decide, if you guys are okay with us making the final decision, if you'd like to give us direction, I'm okay to weigh. But at the end of the day, I think this is the first opportunity, right? There'll be other opportunities in the community to give us feedback. I think we'll hear it either way. So whether it's the first question or the second, we're still going to gather feedback that we can't.
It's not an election, so if your input, there's no guarantee we can honor. But we're interested in knowing what it is to see if we can.
Yeah, I would assume the survey has some sort of small introduction to say why we're even sending it out. So I think as long as you acknowledge in that we understand that most families are probably inclined to want to stay in their current situation or at their current school, while it's our goal to minimize disruptions, you know, we are trying to solicit feedback on other priorities that your family may have, please rank these choices and stuff like that. At least acknowledges that we know what they want to tell us anyway, probably. Again, I don't know what everybody's feelings are, but. I think they're going to, you got to give them an outlet to say it to you one way or the other, so that's like easy.
And I don't think, I don't think it's possible to beat the number of parents who will fill this out. But the, you know, if I had young infants that were not in a school already, my answers to these are completely different. Because now my care is class size, or my kid, you know, to have more individual attention. And like, that's the thought of my mind, is that I need to keep my kid in Southeast or whatever. Like, so if there was a way where we can, I mean, and I know you can only do so much on social media, put it on the website, whatever, but. That would be super interesting to get the people that, you know, that have little kids, but they're not in the district yet, what their answers are. Because that'd look completely different.
That's a point. Did you, did you say that there was a first question before this that was going to ask with their current student situation?
First question is that they have kids in the district. The second question is what school their.
Okay, so we will be able to get results based on student status.
Because they'll make, they'll make choices, especially if they have multiple students that have already started to go through or completed the elementary. They'll make decisions based on teachers they like. And then I don't want my kid to leave North or Southeast or take your pick of the school because I like such and such a teacher and I want my other child to have that teacher hopefully. That will drive decisions too.
I just, I think Chris's comment and Eric's brings to surface the idea of like, who are you sampling? And this is kind of to the point too, like if you do survey with like-minded people, why survey them? Because you're going to get what you expected. So to me, if there, I don't know if there is a way to create a situation where we have that, feel that deep role question, and we do assign some weight to it. But again, speaking, you know, in my situation, I'd answer very differently than probably Eric. And so, but I'm not, I don't have a student history, so I'm not going to get this email. And I probably wouldn't like the Facebook page if I wasn't on the school board, no offense. Because I don't have a vested interest, otherwise I'd be there as a taxpayer.
But certainly will go to Little Spartan families as well. So, yeah, so that is a good way for us to engage those future elementary families, so.
So it's, you know.
It'll be interesting to segment that data to see how the Little Spartan families survey compares to current elementary. So we will touch on it.
Do people know this is coming? I mean, are, is the community aware that there's a boundary still in our system?
It's a public work base.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Or some other communications.
I mean, I hope that they're not going to be blindsided. Because if I was a parent and I got this, I'd be like, what the heck is happening?
I think we've talked about it enough that the community should know. But I've been stuck for long enough to also know that you can communicate all you want, and there will always be some people who are blindsided. So I think we have to accept that that's going to happen. In my mind, the question is, how big is that, that number? But I think we've been talking about it since last spring.
Why not? We've been talking about it, but I just am wondering because I just don't know how people keep up with this stuff. I'm seriously, I just hope that it's not a blind side thing, because I would, I think it's going to be.
I'm going to ask Communications to filter my email when the survey goes out, I'm planning that.
I could see just based on our discussion, maybe adding another free form response that just says, you know, if you chose, you know, if your number one priority that your kid's not change school, you know, tell us why. Is it because it's a teacher? Is it because of the community you've built up with, you know, other? I would just be curious to know what that is. I mean, if it's a teacher, there's no guarantee the teacher stays in the same school either.
No, we don't understand that either today, but it's changed too.
Maybe that's actually for too much information.
I'll tell you what, having been through this twice before, I can tell you that the toughest situations are where families are close together, kids have grown up together, and you put a line down the street, and the kid on one side of the street has to go to a different school from the kid on the other side after they've been friends for, you know, their entire childhood. And, and the families are close and, and, you know, that's very difficult for a family, extremely painful. And, you know, so it's not just a matter of, you know, one school over the other. It's a matter of, you know, severing, in some areas, it's not going to matter so much. But in, you know, especially as we get closer to town, those lines are drawn, you know, right down the middle of the streets or in somebody's backyard. And that really, that really, that's really tough. It's very tough for families to deal with. And that's where we got the most push and the most rough. And understandably so, I, you know, it's terrible, it's terrible to have to do that. So, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough, it's a tough process. And it's going to be tough for us as board members, but it's going to be even tougher for families that have to go through that. And I, I feel badly for them. But unfortunately, you know, we have to do what we have to do, I guess. So we'll see how things unfold.
Good to read more. That's an agility fact that I've heard already. Well, I want to show you that, I guess before I do this, does the board have a, willing to let us make a decision on whether we include that in the ranking?
I like the idea of disclaimer, disclaimer language somewhere.
Concert's coming. So pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
So this Five Maps software is part of a Swedish software that we have access to. This is the map of the district, and as you can see, every single student in the district is on the map. And I hopefully chose just the current. So I'm just going to go right in all the time because this shows you, gives you a good idea of what that looks like. So what we can do is grab, not necessarily grab a line and move it, but what we can do is draw different lines. We can go down to houses, streets, blocks with this survey or this software. From a larger perspective, you can pan out and then draw different lines. And one of the things that happens after you run these pseudo, or run these different options, is it gives you data that starts to look like this. The number of students in each of the buildings, but it breaks it down by demographics also. So, you know, age, race, pre-produced, lunch, things like that. As we move or draw lines. As we move or draw lines differently and add from one boundary to another, it gives us that data in real time. So we can run, and we have played around with this a little bit, run different scenarios. To see what the impact would be. And kind of go back to an earlier question, this, we're not talking about huge redraw of our boundaries. What we're really doing is talking about moving smaller portions, um, in order to get better balance throughout the school district. So we've run several already, um, we can run those, it gives us that information and then we can start to see how. Student enrollment, you know, when to move from one school to another. What we might need to do then to move students from one school to that second school to a third and so on and so forth. One of the challenges, and it's easy to see from this, this map. The yellow up in the upper right is North Grove, uh, that's the, the district where we have the largest enrollment of students. If, you know, if we need to move some students, if we've got room in another school, for example, we have some room in South Prairie. Unfortunately, South Prairie is at the southwest corner of the district. So there's not really an opportunity to move directly from one school in that case to another. So one of the questions I also get is this just gonna be, this just gonna impact two schools? Um, the answer is probably not, and so we have some options to really talk about. Just because we know we've got some extra space and we're, where we're kind of first thing to the scenes. So just wanted to show what this software looks like and the power of this software, which is something we didn't have before the last time we did a boundary study. It's been pretty amazing. I feel like I'm pretty good with software and technology, it's taken me a while to grasp this because it's, it's pretty powerful stuff. But I just wanted to show what this kind of looks like and how we have been and how we will use it to do the boundary study. Does that incorporate student achievement data as well? Cannon?
It can take anything that we put in.
Other question? Any other questions in general, not just about the software, about, about anything we've talked about so far? That's really all I had for the update um, on the boundary study. Really the last thing officially on the superintendent's report, um, I do wanna kind of address, one of the things that Eric has asked is um. We have an opportunity um, to move the softball diamond um. From its current location into work with Park District and move it out to uh, the Park District property. There's been some questions about that, my intent was to make that part of a larger facilities conversation. As we've had conversations about facilities, that's really a much larger conversation that we do need to have, but. The timing for this softball diamond decision really is, it's coming sooner than I think we're gonna be prepared to have that facilities conversation. Because that also has to do with funding. So. I think we do need to break that, that topic out separately. If you open up to questions about that, we can put it on the November fifteenth agenda and I can have more formal presentation on that, but. I do just wanna address um, Eric's request and how I, I ended to address it, but I think we need to go a different direction, so. Any questions about that?
Well, what hap, what happens if we delay it until we can do a, uh, facilities assessment?
So, the, the goal would be to put out for bid the, the design, do that during the winter, could break ground in the spring. We wouldn't be able to use it next spring, but that would allow us to use it.
Oh, but what if we delayed our decision, what if we said no? Until we have a facility, facility study before we really go forward with this significant expense.
Sure, so that's, that's the goal, um, but the Park District ultimately may have the opportunity to, to build on that. They don't have the opportunity right now to, to do that. The urgency would be to have it ready to go for the um, spring of twenty four to, to, to make that decision sooner. Um, it would just potentially delay that to twenty five.
I'm, I'm not comfortable until we get more information, whether it's November fifteenth or.
That's how I feel, yeah.
Whatever, I appreciated that Eric wanted to have, have it on the agenda and. I'm just not comfortable saying, let's just go ahead and do this.
Now we have so many, so many needs, it's, it's, it's really something we need to look at and rank things, I think, in terms of priorities.
As, as part of an overall facilities conversation.
Just a comment, I brought this up, uh. I guess more or less, it came up at a sports boosters meeting, they were talking about the softball field and it's really interesting points. I don't know the legitimacy to this, but I do understand that there is a cost the district bears to like dredging the existing fields annually. Um, and I do understand that there's some time sensitive nature to a cooperative agreement with the Park District for funding. And with some private donors, I don't know, again, given how fluid the situation is, I think you're right, there definitely needs to be more information. Before the board can make a decision, but what I thought was at one point a black and white decision. Turned really uh, gray when some other stakeholders were just talking openly at that meeting about some of the woes at the ground level. Um, so again, I can, I can understand why it's coming up, but I am interested to know more about what the costs are to not making this decision. If, if that's possible to see, so.
Yeah, my, my intention for bringing it up for discussion, and I'm not perfectly flexible as to what that discussion is, I just didn't want the decision to be made without getting a chance to voice an input. On it, because I felt like there was a pivot being taken to possibly go this route, and I felt like we had a lot of priorities that we needed. That it deserved more, more attention for us to weigh those options, knowing the significant obligations that we have out of the, out of the high school. That whenever you come across any sort of money like this, and it's great that we were able to save this sort of funds on our, our existing construction projects. But that it really warranted us looking at that and prioritizing it as opposed to saying, well, here's something else that came up that we can, we can throw it at. Part of that has to do with the number of students impacted for me, um, part of it has to do with, I think, the softball diamond is a. The sort of project that it's perhaps easier to garner support in the community for, whether that be through sports boosters or S C F or some other. Um, park grant or something else where we may not be able to get the same level of community support and funding for, um, you know, say.
Galvanized piping?
Galvanized piping, um, you know, it's just, it's a, it's an easier thing to go out and say, we need support for this, that I, I, I think. That, that's why I wanted to have at least the discussion with the board a little to, to talk about project prioritization and. Um, if that's at a later meeting, that's, that's perfectly acceptable to me.
Well, and, and that's where to Eric's point, are there other projects that cost us to not repair? So like, again, the way I understand it is there might be a forty-five thousand dollar a year annual cost to dredge the existing softball field. And every year we, and I'm making numbers up, but are there other projects that have a lower cost? Again, to maintain versus, you know, band-aid versus replace? And is the decision the board's making less about a softball field, more about a replace or repair? And that's kind of what I'm trying to understand, but again, more information.
Yeah, I, I. I, I think there are, in fact, I know that there are annual costs to the current softball diamond and, and just continuing to, to use it. There are certainly other uh, facilities used within the district that are, you know, that we're, that we're putting money into that ultimately would like to go in a different direction, but. Some of those are larger than the softball diamond and the cost that goes into that, some are not. So, yeah.
I think it's been an issue for a long time, I think the softball issue has been on the, around for a long time and that there's been a big need. I'm not saying it needs to be the priority, but I'm saying we really should be looking at it because it's kind of been pushed over here for such a long time. I think the girl is a little loud, I'm losing my voice.
In ten years on the board, I can't remember it ever being mentioned until this.
I would ask a former softball player and she could probably tell us.
I said, I'm not saying it wasn't, I just can't remember it ever coming up in any of our, right, project, so this was all news to me.
So what I've heard is that there's interest in having a conversation, that the board would really like that to be part of a, a larger facility conversation.
I think so.
See what we can do to get that moving and expedite that and um.
Steve, could that facilities conversation look something like cost to repair versus cost to replace and just like cost benefit in it, like. Again, kind of like an investment piece, you know, you go, I can get ten percent on this, I can get eight percent on this.
And I think we can look at priorities, overall cost of those facility um, projects, but then um, maybe not with. I don't, I don't know that would be valuable to do or worth doing that for every project, but there may be something to jump out at us that we know that there. Is going to be an ongoing cost until that work is done. So, I mean, we'll work with Nicole and, and Mark and uh. I think where that makes sense, we'll try to include that information and in other areas where it doesn't make sense, we'll, we won't. Yeah.
I, we would not have all that information right now, we're too crowded right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Again, and I am not asking, I guess I'm just wondering, is that how the district prioritizes those projects or is there a way?
I mean, we've, we've taken, you know, we, we took that twenty twenty-one bond money out and then we were able to prioritize what we wanted to do with that money. And then we brought it to the board, um, so we could go out to bid, so um, I guess I'm just confused on this priority list that.
We have the one from F T M.
Yeah, we have that.
And you tried to tag ones that were important, critical.
Structural, yeah.
Sure, but we have about a million dollars left and that's not gonna get us anywhere.
It's not gonna replace all piping yourself.
Yeah, it's not gonna touch anything, so um, we felt like this was the appropriate time to take that money and. Uh, put it into this field because Mark can tell you how much we spend a year on the field.
No, I think the biggest part is that we have a field that's in the lowest part of the district that in the wettest months of the year that we. Asked how many times the softball players have played on that field, so our championship team that year with one state, they played one game on the field. Because the rest of the time it was too wet to play on. So that surface out there is a best surface for June, July, August, September, when you're dry. But when it's April, May and March, that surface we cannot dry and we can't get it dry enough back there, and so. We could be, keep on dumping more money, we could dump sixty-five thousand in a year to keep it maintained, the edge, the dredge out the ditch. The work on the piping and keep that all going, to put the so, the soil down, but it keeps on just, we just, those months, it's, it's no good surface. So where it is, it just shouldn't have, I mean, back when you asked me back in two thousand two when you put it in there, I could have told you back then it was a poor spot. Because my cows were sinking back there that I had from F F A, you know, because that was pasture, I mean, that was pasture land back when I first started. We had the cows, we had the sheep back there, that's what that area was. They brought in, they put in all these sports things, but they didn't put any tile, so I already spent, I spent three thousand dollars trying to find these mysterious tile that's out there. There is no tile in that location that they have, we have sinkholes that form out there because of the amount of water that goes around it, so we have to fill the sinkholes in. So I mean, you can keep on putting money, you can put thirty-five, forty thousand into it to really, to keep it, to try to make it playable, but again. Depends on what Mother Nature throws at us, this year, you know, we had a lot of games, again, they had to go out to the Park District because again, those two fields were not playable. At all out there, and that's been an ongoing thing for years, so you know, here you have fields that they can't, can't ever play on, they have to go out to the Park District. April's okay, once May comes in, the fields are being used by all the other sports teams that you're, we're fighting with them to try to get a softball field to be able to play. If it happened, what, did it twice, they had to go to other school districts this year because we weren't playable here, there was no fields. Available at the Park District and then we have to get them there, so I think that's the part that we took a look at this as a, a win-win situation to be able to move them to a spot. They have donors that are looking to donate some more money, that if we go out to the Park District, they will give more, a little more money to go out that direction. Again, you know, yes, we have some big stuff, you know, we look at things, you know, for galvanized pipe, a building, we can do. We can even do one building, a section, I mean, with what, our bids that came in, you guys, that bid package had in there the fix, southeast and west and north. We couldn't afford any of those alternative bids to do one building for one section, it wasn't even the whole building. We were looking at, you know, the primary K through two buildings to get rid of the galvanized piping, to work on those bathrooms and to make those A D accessible. But we don't have that, so I mean. Yeah, I, I, you know, we can put together, keep on, we'll put together a good list for you guys to show what all the upcoming costs, because. You know, I really, you know, I've got seven years left and I'd love to see some major improvements in this and how it come through, but you know. When we take a look at the amount of stuff that we have to repair, I mean, we have to think about, we can't do it in one big chunk, it has to look at small chunks to be able to be manageable. Because like I said, these ten million that we spent the last two years, it was. And we're still, we're still fixing stuff from some of that, that were coming in and having, so that's why, that's why we presented that up there, because after looking at all the facilities, looking at everything that was out there. What's one thing that we could maybe make a big difference, and again, they have the parking outdoor, we don't have to pay for any parking out there. Uh, they already have electricity out there, we don't have to pay for, like, you know, our electric run to our spot would be there, but the electricity's there, there's a playground there for the kids to be playing out there, so it's really child-friendly. Take a look, I'll, I'll walk you down right now to the bottom barns, uh, it's nice and dry now, so thank you for you guys fixing that this summer, because otherwise we walk through the lake first. To get to, which where the buses are all parked and then get to where it is, but there is no parking. You have to go around the F F A barn down there, you have to see some of our equipment as you go through, there's no spots for grandma and grandpa's to park down there because of all buses. So it's a long walk for them to be able to get to their location, so it was just something that we thought would be presented to you guys that. Here's something that we can make a big difference, that would be big impact for us. Because there's little things, yes, that we can still keep on spending. Money on, and there'll still be some money for that, so a couple rooftop units, but I tell you. I would, I would try to make them last a few more years because the new ones we bought, the compressors are going out, so the, the quality for the last two years, what's come out of COVID. Has not been there, so we, we're really trying to maintain some of our stuff to try to hope in two more years, we see quality products start coming out. From the industry, because everyone that's put stuff in during COVID, we're having a heck of a time, we're having a heck of a time getting people like Carrier come in to bring their crews in, to actually maintain the. Warranty on them, so. So that's my two cents for you, it's actually ten.
I've never loved the idea of our priority was equally wet. Um, we've talked about it a lot, I think for me. To say, yes, let's do this, when I really know nothing, then the Park District is gonna build us a softball diamond, I mean, that's really the extent of my knowledge of this project. Felt like I wasn't doing my due diligence, like I'd like to know a little bit more about it before we say, let's spend a million dollars to build a softball diamond or whatever it is. Just to be more informed about that project. Was really what I was asking, and you know, I think other, you know, other fellow board members, you know, want it in relation to other things. That wasn't the focus for me, it was. Probably being a little shy because I'm a whole graduation gate, I mean, that's funny to go, yes, here you go, let's do this, but to be better informed about that project.
So do you have direction?
Not quite, but we're getting close. Softball with the, is part of a, a larger facility look? What I heard from Chris was just wanna hear more about softball, so I guess I just wanna make sure that I know from the board's perspective.
I, I, I don't know if Jim or Steve, but I disagree with Eric, I actually. Since the softball discussion has come up, I actually. Said, you know, this is a project, it's, I'm healthy, you're on the board, we have always talked about that softball field and dredging it and. If my recollection is right, I don't know that it is, we've in-house tried to take care of it, we've also had studies done on it, it's always been a problem. So I was excited about the possibility, I also love that there's two taxing bodies that are gonna work together. Which I always have felt like there should be more of that in this community, we all don't need all of our own stuff. So I was really excited about that, my issue is I just don't really know anything about it. You know, I did talk to some Park District commissioners and they said, Chauncey came to them and made a presentation about what the softball field needs are. I haven't heard that presentation. So that was more my thing is I just wanted to be better informed about spending that much money, what are we spending it on? Where is it gonna be, how big is it gonna be, how much seating is there gonna be, I don't know, so I could talk intelligently about it if community members asked about it.
Overall, how does everybody else feel? Just as much trouble.
Yeah, outside of Chris on that as well, just, just more information to be more knowledgeable. I don't, I mean, we don't need to go an hour on it, but like, just so that, I mean, even just Mark talking for five minutes enlightened me to some things I didn't.
Well, Mark doesn't talk for this.
He wants to go a few hours on softball.
I think I would like to see, you know, what our priorities list is, you know, with some of those costs. I mean, I know we talked about the list that we have through FGM, but, you know, the last I remember it was a, it was a pretty thick list and I don't remember, I don't remember most of the stuff that was on there. So it'd be nice to see that again.
Maybe this is just being, you know, being agreeable here, but the more I, I sit on this floor, the more I realize, wow, I, I'm glad we've got experts who are making some of these decisions. I would never say no to more decision-making criteria, but I don't know that I could ever feel comfortable as a board member saying definitively yes or no without having a formal recommendation from an administrator about a project like this. So, you know, to Chris's point, to the rest of the board's point, I definitely think more information is always great. But at the same time, I think that if the admin's general position is this is a good use of funds, I, you know, I would, I would stand behind that decision. I think that seems reasonable as long as there's good justification behind it. So.
And I'm just saying there's no justification that will satisfy it for me is all. And that's, I'm fine being the only one that's in that position. But it, to, to tell me that, that we know that we've got years and fifty million dollars at least worth of work and we've got asbestos and we've got galvanized pipe, we've got all these projects and the only reason that we're not saving this money and allocating it towards those projects is because all those projects cost more money is like me saying, well, I need ten thousand for a roof. I only got a thousand dollars saved up. I might as well buy the TV because it's not the ten thousand I need for the roof. That doesn't do it for me. It's just, it's, the number of students that it impacts is not nearly the same as the, as the impact of all of the HVAC work and everything else that we, that we have as priority, priorities. And if it was something where we knew where we were going to get that funding in, in three years to be able to tack all these other projects, I'd probably feel differently. It's okay, we can spend this now because we can get that, those other funds later, but so far we have zero, zero sources for any of this money. So to not start saving what little we do have towards those projects for me just feels irresponsible. So I've shared, I've shared my piece.
Do we, and I think to your point, Eric, that is like the, the romantic vision. I just wonder, does the district possess the ability to long-term save for a roof like versus a TV? Is that something we can even do?
In, in general, we do, but correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, with these bonds, you've got three years. Right? There, there is a window to spend this money. This money cannot be saved beyond that. It's got to be spent. So this, the, this funding source is a little unique.
So I mean, again, to me then I go as, because I, I know the mentality that Eric's at where, yeah, it'd be great if you could say, all right, let's just stock away as much money as we can, pay down the, the debt snowball that exists and bring our debt service down and that, you know, that all seems really great, but at the same time I just go, do, is that what we're weighing this or that? Or are we just weighing this or nothing? Because what it sounds like is this or nothing. And so that's, that's my pain point in this whole, so.
You're the architect. I mean, you know how to select projects, so I just want to kind of get your, take in where you're at, what, what you would prefer.
Either way, we're going to have debt service. And it's probably not going to look pretty as to what that is, so. I would like to see more information on what, what we're paying for and what the whole facility is going to entail for the cost of the softball piece. And like.
Use agreement is going to be.
And I would like, and I would like, yeah, what, what does, what does that look like, you know? And, and I'd like to see just the list. I'm not asking you to do anything to the rest of the list, but say, here's the list again of all of our priorities. Here's what we've accomplished, which I know was a small portion, even though it was twenty nine dollars. It's a small portion. Here's what we've tackled. Here's what still remains. So that gives us perspective on making a decision. Because there are actually big items there and I know we can't save money. We've got to spend it on something. But is there something on that list that makes more sense? Yeah, maybe there is. I think having those two pieces, the information on what the entire facility would look like, what we're paying for, what they're paying for versus what's on the list and we may or may not be able to tackle that. And I think the list, to be honest with you, I think we ought to bring that instead of just a facilities discussion. That probably ought to be something that we talk about quarterly or at least twice a year so that we continue to know what are we checking off and what aren't we checking off? Because even I forget about what's on the list and that, that's an extensive list.
What may be more manageable for as soon as November fifteenth is just looking at the existing list, not going into additional information, but then more information on softball.
Yeah, I think if you had those two on that agenda, back to back, we, we'd be in a position to at least, I think, give you direction.
And if you can identify some projects on the current list that are in that price range, that would be nice too.
I think.
That would go a long way to, to, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Limiting discussion.
And I'd just like to know more about softball in general, if there's, you know, what, what's the cost benefit analysis of having it out at the park district versus having it here? I see the costs as if they're out there. I assume there's extra costs for us to have to bust them out there regularly and perhaps more or less inconvenience. I mean, I'd just be curious to know what the option trying to keep that here is.
There is, but you know, the cost of, the cost of, you know, drain tile, you can solve everything, you know? You can put a bunch of drain tiles in, they'll clog, they'll break, things happen unless you're going to literally raise that area.
Well, if we're talking about studying money, I'm just curious.
Yeah, but that's a lot of money that you just don't, you know, it's like, it's like building a building, you know, a big portion of the money goes into the pipes and the ducts and the concrete that you never see. People don't understand the, the percentage of your cost that's in that. Forty percent of your cost is your HVAC and electrical systems in your building minimum. And it's not the stuff people notice. It's not the, it's not, you know, coming up out of the ground, you know, you build the building, you put it under roof and then nothing happens for seven months. Well, not really. There are a lot of work going on in there, but people don't think about it because it's never visible when they finally occupy the building. Same with, you know, the, the less you can spend on earthwork, the better off you are because it's expensive work for one field. I, I, if I was going to say spend money on a softball field, I'd tell you to put it out there at this point. But just because it's going to be costly to raise that. Because when you raise it, now you create drainage issues elsewhere. So you've got to, it, it's all a domino effect. I think we let that be a low spot in, in an overflow green space and we put it out there. Is it the right time to spend the million dollars on that right now? I mean, that's up for debate. But I don't think I would put any more into this field if I didn't have to. I don't know. What do you think, Mark? But I would, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, no, I know. Because the way soil goes, I mean, it just goes back to its natural state of being the lowest spot and, you know, it will just keep on sinking. I mean, the dugouts are sinking out there, so they're all crumbling, so.
You're going to bring it all up.
Yeah, just build it. Yeah, that's why, that's why the option there, but trust me, I've got a whole long list I can bring.
What I'm hearing is that if we just take a look at the existing priority list, a more detailed presentation on softball for November fifteenth, which I think we can manage, then let's put the board in a position to make a, ask questions and then make a decision.
If you can.
Yes.
Highlight anything that might be on that existing list that might be a, if there isn't.
Yeah.
There may have been. They may all be too large of a scope, it's possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing softball field. I'm seeing five hundred thousand dollar project that saves the district money over time against other five hundred thousand dollar project that saves the jury.
Yeah, I do. Now, now I think I've got the direction I need.
Okay, good. So I think we've already drifted into open discussion issues.
At once.
Okay.
It's probably more future agenda item, but where do we stand on, if you're not aware, making our website ADA accessible?
Our, our website is ADA accessible?
I don't know about that. So do you have everything visual, all the contrast meet, all the non-verbal? People can't use keyboards? Can I access everything?
That is a great question. I mean, and as I've inherited this prior website as it is, you know, this, we're going through the process, but yeah, there's definitely pieces of it that are, you know, PDF attachments, like the, you know, things that we need to kind of work through, come through. The communications plan that we're working on, that's a piece and a component of it. It's a goal of the next communication plan to become fully ADA compliant. It is not at its current state, fully ADA compliant.
Right. Because we've just, we've just been seeing a trend where they're going lawsuits after large companies, forcing companies to change their company colors because there's not enough contrast. So on their website, they can't use their own company logo or color. And they're going after small companies because they think that they'll just settle the lawsuit quickly. And they're going after public institutions. So that's, obviously we're a primary public institution.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Because most of those websites look like a third grader, no offense, look like a third grader's crayon put together because of the contrast differences and the size of the text. It's ridiculous. And if you're a design firm that wants your website to look designing to attract clients, it's useless. I, we may not even have a website anymore. Because it's ridiculous. But I don't want the district to fall into a pattern of that, hey, there's an easy target. We're not accessible when we find ourselves in a lawsuit through the justice department.
One of the, my understanding is that one of the selling points of the current provider is that it did help us meet that requirement now. I, I would guess at some point somewhere on our website, there is something that is not ADA compliant, but that was a big selling point. So we can look into it. I think for the, the majority of it is, but there's probably some, some areas where we need to work with our providers if we can.
Because I'd say look at it graphically. From what I've read, it doesn't appear to, it's not a knock on anything, if you're saying it doesn't appear to meet the requirements that I've seen as examples of ones that do. Because again, they look childish, quite frankly.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah, that's all. I just had a question. Since the last meeting when the graduation date was moved in the location, has it been communicated to the community, school district community that it was moved in the new date where it's at? It has been? Yeah, so it did go out in the, the newsletter for the high school. So it was, it was communicated that way. We updated it on the website. There wasn't like a all district communication that went out. It was. Just had a couple of parents ask me what happened. Like, did it get moved? And I was like, I'm not on social media, so maybe there? I just really wasn't sure. Yeah, I, it, we need to get an announcement out to the full district. That's something we can do. We thought, I think, from the high school's perspective, it was just targeted specifically to. Yeah, these were high school senior parents that were asking those questions. So if there could be more of the same. Absolutely. Yes. And sometimes it can get lost in those letters. For sure. I'm pretty sure that's probably what happened. Yeah, yeah.
Precisely to my point about the boundary study, but who's beating a dead horse here? Chris, me?
Other questions, discussion ideas, observations? Future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment of employment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, student discipline, matters related to individual students' purchase or lease of real estate and imminent litigation?
Second.
In the second, a roll call?
Nelson?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Charlo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson? Yes. John Beck? Yes. Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Salute.
Sorry, jumped the boat.
I think there's a motion. All in favor?
Aye.